Okay, I think we're all here and appreciate people's patience. We were just having to switch from one Zoom meeting to the next. Why don't we go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council meeting of August 24th, 2021. You order an actual roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. If Mr. Espinoza, I see that you are here. Could you be so kind with a short notice to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
For that opportunity. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. I appreciate it. We'll go ahead and move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not genderized pursuant to state law. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak, if you could raise your hand at this time, and we will have the city clerk bring you in. And first it will be Mr. Evangelist, please.
Jim Evangelist?
Hello?
Hello, Jim, whenever you're ready.
All right. August 15th, I emailed a a letter to Mayor Medina because I was very concerned about something. So I'm going to read it to you now so that all five members get to hear this together. Dear Mayor Rico Medina, I am addressing you in a very formal manner, Mayor Medina, because I am very concerned about the welfare of our city workforce in respect to COVID today. I watched as many decisions were made by the city manager to protect and make whole our city workforce. I'm not here to debate the wisdom of those decisions. I am writing you to express concern over current policy and ask for answers to questions related to policies that should be in place to safeguard our city workforce. I would like to know how many of our city employees have been vaccinated. This question is especially important in light of the fact many of city employees were given emergency priority access to these vaccines. I want to know how many employees chose not to receive the vaccines? And what measures are being taken by the city manager to prevent these employees from infecting other employees and the public? I continue to see employees driving with more than one person in the vehicle without masks. I want you to convince me and the public there are measures in place that ensure the unvaccinated are not in a position to infect fellow employees or the public. Now is a time to show leadership and set standards that will protect city employees from each other and protect the public from city employees. Aggressive measures are being implemented in the private sector and public sector across the country. I want to be assured the city of San Bruno is picking up the slow pace it has demonstrated so far in its response to COVID. I am not satisfied with an employee driving six hours to secure 15 gallons of disinfectant or sending a large number of employees home at full salary to have a reserve workforce. I am looking for there to be verifiable policies in place that will protect employees from each other and still perform the services they are being paid to provide.
Mayor, I believe that Mr. Evangelist lost his connection.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Evangelist, for your comments. Are there any other members of the public?
There are no other hands raised from the public.
Okay, then thank you. And we will move on to announcements and presentations. First item, we see in the San Bruno Park School District, update from the superintendent Jose Espinoza. Thank you for leading in the pledge. And I will say, as we turn it over to you, as far as this is not your first time, but before us, and I appreciate you being here again, but also it's been a very daunting and challenging time for superintendents, educators, trustees. So thank you for the work that you've been doing, and I'm sure you have been busy. So welcome, and we will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, and thank you, City Council and City Manager Grogan, for inviting me and giving me a few minutes just to give you a short update. And I do have a slide deck, so if I can share my screen.
Yes, you should be able to share your screen.
Awesome, thank you. All right. So today I'll just talk a little bit about, you know, the start of our school year and what we have been doing so far. As we ended last school year and as vaccinations were being, you know, they were more available for a lot, you know, more of our population. Schools, our school districts specifically, but all schools, we're not planning for a, any type of, you know, any type of having a plan on returning back to school. But unfortunately, as we are all aware, the COVID, the new COVID strain started to spread a lot faster than I think anybody expected. And school districts had to respond to that, you know, just like we are responding to it at this point. And we're actually still in the middle of responding to some of the changes that have come our way. So, but today I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing so far. But I'd like to start with some gratitude first. You know, our school district is thankful for our teachers and our staff who continue to show up and go above and beyond, even though they are one of the lowest paid, we are one of the lowest paid districts in San Mateo County. We are thankful for our San Bruno community. Excuse me. We are thankful for our San Bruno community, including our PTAs, our PTO, our San Bruno Education Foundation, the Lions Club Rotary, and local business partners who continue to step up and support our school district since I've arrived, definitely, but I know way before them as well. We are thankful for our students, our parents, and our families, and we are striving to put them in the middle of everything that we do. And we are also thankful for an engaged Board of Trustees. Our goals for this year, and this is something, the last couple of days, we've welcomed all our teachers and our staff back, and we laid out a couple of goals that we're going to really continue to work on this year and hopefully going forward. One of those things is customer and community experience. And this goal is not to say, you know, one person or that person or that school or that office is not serving their community like we would want to. This goal is more about looking at, you know, every interaction and how we as a district, every single person in our district, how do we serve our community? And what kind of experience does our community have in every interaction they have with us? And our community, of course, is our teachers, our staff, our parents, our students. So this goal really speaks to everybody in our system. It speaks to me. Every time a principal has an interaction with me, I want to have this in the back or in the front of my mind to say, what kind of experience is that principal, is that teacher, is that parent, is that staff person, is that student having when they interact with me? So this goal is really, really spans across our whole system. And we hope that with this goal and us, everybody in our system, really focusing on this, that our community experience or those experiences that our community has with our school district will improve over time. The San Bruno Park School District Culture and Climate. You know, we had a conversation and we're very clear that we want a culture of continuous improvement. We want a climate where everybody is happy to come to work every single day. We want to make sure our students are happy to come to school. Our teachers are happy to come to teach. Our staff members are happy to come every single day. We know, you know, and I think we all have maybe that friend that's going to critique everything. Even the most perfect, whatever it is, there's going to be a critique for that. But if we're always in that mindset, then our culture and climate is going to stay in that area. We really need to focus on the positive things because I can guarantee you that positive things happen every day in our district, every single day. But unfortunately, we haven't been really good about sharing those positive things. And we really want to focus on sharing those positive things, supporting all our staff, teachers, principals, all administrators, all staff members, supporting our students, supporting our community, and really improving the culture and climate of our district. And the other goal that we want to focus on, student achievement and the San Bruno Park School District continuous improvement through teamwork. Teamwork is something that we have started talking about, you know, at least since I arrived, but I'm sure it's been talked about before. And it's something that if we're going to truly improve our community experience, if we're truly going to improve culture and climate, it's going to take us working as a very effective team from every staff member all the way down through our school board. And this is something that we're going to work on. These three areas we really want to focus on this year, we're going to meet to talk about how we're going to do that as a district. And hopefully, our community will see that. They will be able to see some of these things in action. And I hope that, you know, just as when somebody reaches out, you know, with the concern, I hope they also reach out and say, you know what, I really noticed that our district is working on improving, you know, the community experience for everybody. So hopefully that will happen as well. All right, now I will go over some of the must dos. So like I said, over the last two days, we've welcomed our staff. We're getting ready for everybody to be here. And there are some things, because of the spread of the variant, there are some things that we want to make sure that our community is doing. The first, the number one thing we want to make sure, we want to make sure that every person, every person in our community has a responsibility and takes that responsibility on to keep each other and our community safe by following mitigation strategies. Just knowing that, hey, I'm responsible for myself, for my family, for our school district, for the greater San Bruno community, to make sure I'm following these mitigation strategies. We want to make sure that everybody's monitoring their family's health and keeping their children at home if they're experiencing any COVID-related symptoms. And, you know, I will share this presentation because there is a link to what are some symptoms that are there. I have a couple of links here, so I'll share the presentation, and you guys can post it on your agenda, hopefully. We want to make sure that everybody's completing a symptom screener daily. All students before they come, or parents before students come to school should complete a symptom screener for those students. And we're really going to, our schools, our district is really going to, you know, keep reminding everybody. And we really hope that everybody remembers in the morning and does their symptom screener so that we know that we are monitoring the health and we're monitoring symptoms and we're not accidentally spreading the variant when it's not necessary or it's never necessary, but we're not accidentally doing that. We want to make sure that anybody that comes to our campuses are wearing protective masks while on any of our campuses. Not just while you're indoors, but anytime you're on our campus, we're asking that you wear protective masks. And last but not least, we're asking that everybody follow the San Bruno Park School District Plan for In-Person Instruction, which we've emailed out to everybody, I believe, next week, and I think it's on Wednesday. We're going to have a question and answer for our community around our plan for in-person instruction. But it's also posted on our website, and there's a link here, so hopefully everybody will be able to see that and review it. Some of the things that are in process now, vaccination verification. There was a change in, that the governor signed that said, you know, that we need to, that everybody should be vaccinated and individuals that are choosing not to be vaccinated, they're going to be tested weekly. Currently, our district is in the middle of verifying all our staff members' vaccination status and then putting in a plan for anybody not vaccinated to test weekly. And I'm happy to report that the last, the last kind of numbers that I've seen, we do have a very high number of vaccinations. I believe we had about 70, you know, people that had already turned in their verification. And out of those 70, we had about three that were not vaccinated. So we're really happy about that. We're in the middle of working out a testing plan. Originally, when we first went into summer, we were, our plan was to do response testing, which means if we had a student or a staff member that started to display symptoms at the school site, we could give them a rapid test. If the rapid test was positive, then we would refer them out to test with their own physician. Since then, there's been a little bit of a, you know, since the variant has spread, that has changed. So now we're working on a plan to, number one, still test those that may start to show symptoms while at school. But number two, also a, just a weekly testing plan. And what we're going to do is we're working with the state on a pooled testing plan, which means the state is going to commit, or not the state themselves, but they're going to assign a company to come into our district, test the classroom. If anybody in that classroom is positive, then they will come back. They will do, you know, individual testing. And then they will also do contact tracing and notify anybody affected by that. So that's the plan we're working on now. And as soon as we have all of that verified, we're going to share that plan with our community. Ventilation. We're working to really improve our ventilation across our district. We have some very old buildings, and we have some work that needs to be done. I believe we might be, the work that we've just contracted with somebody to come in and make sure that all our filters are updated, they're changed, and they're ready for the school year. I believe that that's complete, or else we're really, really close to completing that. But we did contract with an outside vendor to come in and ensure that our ventilation, the way that it is right now, is as good as we can have it. We are also looking at other avenues, you know, grants possibly to update some of our ventilation systems. But in the meantime, we've also purchased air purifiers for every classroom. Now, when we purchased these air purifiers, they didn't have enough for us to purchase them for our cafeterias, for our libraries, all the common spaces. And I believe we have already put in an order for those or we're in the process of doing that, and we hope to receive those as soon as possible. Independent study, another curveball that came at us pretty quickly. We are finalizing our independent study program. And we have roughly 40 students that, or families that have requested independent study, and we're working through the request. Independent study was really intended to serve students that had any health concerns. And we're working through the families that have requested that to ensure that we're serving the community that it was intended for. And, you know, we're working directly with the families that have requested independent study. All right, our commitment, last but not least. Our district firmly believes that strong public schools are a foundational part of every strong community. Every staff member in the San Bruno Park School District is committed to give their best daily to support our students, families, and the San Bruno community. And we are striving, we are striving to make the improvements we need so that our city is proud of their school district. Thank you. And then I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Espinoza. Appreciate the update, appreciate your time. Because I know it's busy with school and all that you're and the staff are dealing with. And I know it has been a unique time for you to come into your new home in the city, and this is what's been before you. So to you and your staff and your team, our thanks and appreciation. I will open it to my colleagues if there are any quick questions for the superintendent. May I please start with Councilman Mason?
Thank you. Just wanted to thank the superintendent for his comments. There was an article a couple of months ago saying that probably the hardest job throughout COVID has been that of a school superintendent followed by staff. So thank you. And we just got our teacher assignments this morning. The communication this past week has been, you know, really great around email and multiple languages. And I just want to say that I think as a city, we should appreciate it, and we appreciate the efforts to improve communication through email, through social media, through all of the apps that are on our phones now. Thank you, and, you know, we look forward to hopefully a better year than last year.
Thank you. And, you know, as long as far as you're talking about communication, I do want to share, take an opportunity to share that our district is going through some really big changes. We are changing our student information system. And so our communication has been a little off because as we're transitioning, all the emails are not transitioning over the way it should, right? It shouldn't have just transitioned right over, like no bugs, that should happen every time. But of course, we're working through that. And so we really want to make sure that everybody understands it's not that we've dropped anybody or, you know, we're not wanting to communicate with you. We're going through a transition. But we're hoping that with our principals communicating as well, as much as they are, that we're reaching everybody. So if there's anything that somebody, you know, doesn't receive and they realize a neighbor received it or a friend received it, please reach out to us because we need to make sure that your email is in our system. So thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Espinoza. It's great to see you here tonight. Just wanted to express my appreciation for your efforts, the staff efforts. You can't have a great city without great schools. And just wanted to express my full support, and I'm sure our colleagues' full support, and having a really great year. So thank you for all you're doing.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I just want to echo my colleagues, thanking you for coming to present to us and echoing the sentiment that, you know, our city organization and the school district are separate organizations, but we rise and fall together. And the success of the school district, if the school district is successful, that's a win for the city, which is a win for all of us. So we're wishing you a successful school year for you, your staff, and of course, for all the students. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. We do have a member of the public who wants to ask a question or speak to Mr. Espinoza. City Clerk?
Yes, Jim Evangelist?
Yes, hi. Actually, I'm sorry, but I didn't really want to ask Mr. Espinoza a question. I felt like I may have been cut off due to my computer, I don't know which. Is that true? Because I really wanted to finish my statement. Did I get it finished? I have no idea.
I'd have to pull up the letter to see, but the city manager does have your letter, and that certainly can be forwarded to all of the colleagues and do it tonight.
Did all the other council members get my letter? I mean, did they all hear the ending of my statement?
Mr. Evangelist, we waited a little bit. I don't know if it was a final comment. Right now, we're on Mr. Espinoza. But what I can do, what I will do, as soon as our meeting's concluded, I'll forward the email.
Well, honestly, I'm not blaming anybody. It's just that there's a technical glitch here, and I feel like possibly I didn't get to finish what I wanted to do, which is, you know, it's nobody's fault.
I understand. So what I will do, so that they all have it, the city manager has it. Staff can go ahead and send it to each member of the council. And I will also make sure that that gets done before the end of the evening. Well, it is the end of the evening, but before going to bed tonight. So they will have it.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mr. Espinoza, I'm sorry to interrupt the situation. It's the only way I had of getting in contact with anybody. I apologize to everybody.
No need to apologize, and I'm sure, as the colleagues have said, and Mr. Evangelist and the community is very appreciative and thankful for your time being here as well as the task that you've had and the year that embarks. And we're all standing with you for a successful and enjoyable school term.
Thank you. All right, good night.
Okay, again, enjoy your evening, get some dinner, sir. All right, let's move on to item B. Receive update on Crestmore High School Development. I'm going to turn this over to our city manager for an update, please.
Through the mayor before we begin, I am recused from the Crestmore High School Development, so I request to be changed over from being a panelist, please.
Councilmember Hamilton, thank you so much. Should have been briefed, and I should have remembered that as well. And thank you for bringing that up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Medina, members of the city council, public, both watching on Zoom and at home. Javon Grogan, city manager, I am here, joined tonight by Craig Widdam, a consultant that has been assisting the city with the Crestmore Development and our community and economic development director. Pamela Wu is also available for any questions. So we have prepared a brief update for the council and the community, and let's begin. So the objective is we'll give a little background on the site. We'll give some information on the site's development status. We will discuss the city's role and the city's role in facilitating development. And then we'll talk about next steps as well as questions. So a little bit of background on the site, really high level. As we all know, the San Mateo Union High School District owns the property. The high school ceased operations in 1983. However, the site remained active until just about two years ago as with leased property and pendentla high school that just opened. The site is approximately 40 acres. Approximately 25 acres are developable, could be as Uh, could be as low as twenty depending on the configuration and, um, retail, uh, residential appropriate open space. An important note is that the site has been a amazing, uh, recreation resource for the community for many years, especially youth soccer. Uh, we know the San Bruno Soccer Complex, um, for many years has utilized, uh, the, the former, uh, football and, and baseball field on the site. Uh, however, the Union High School District restricted access to the site in twenty-twenty, uh, citing COVID-nineteen concerns and prevention. Uh, that has, uh, changed as of late. Uh, the district did reset, did agree to temporarily reopen the site, uh, for soccer for the fall twenty-one season. Uh, and, uh, the, the district, uh, is working with the soccer community and district staff, uh, is maintaining and, uh, renovating the, uh, grass area during the closure. Uh, if, if any of you have been up there, I know a number of council members have been up there. Uh, the conditions of those soccer fields deteriorated significantly with overgrown weeds and gopher holes. Uh, and it is district property and the district, uh, is in, in the process of rehabbing that. Uh, long-term recreation use is to be determined pending the, uh, future site planning. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. Uh, and it's important to note that the city's general plan does require preservation of the playing fields as what's called privately owned publicly available space, uh, that is twelve acres. Uh, we'll get into that in the present, in, in the presentation. Uh, it's also important to note that the city did establish a subcommittee of, uh, Councilmember Mason and, uh, Mayor, Mayor Medina, uh, to work with, uh, district officials, uh, they met several times over the past year. A lot of, uh, honestly fruitful conversations and in large measure, uh, the district's agreement to reopen, uh, those, uh, soccer fields, uh, to the community was in large measure to the articulation from members of the subcommittee. Now I'll, I'll turn it over to Craig Wytham, who will go through a few slides, uh, first beginning with development status.
Thanks, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Um, I'll run through a few slides here to get the council and the community up to date. Um, as you're aware, the, back in twenty-nineteen, the school district declared the property as surplus and issued a request for qualifications seeking a development partner. As a result of that RFQ, the district executed a purchase agreement with D.R. Horton, who is a publicly traded national home builder. That was in January of this year. Uh, in July of this year, D.R. Horton informed the city that it was no longer in contract with the district regarding the purchase of that property. Um, and then most recently, um, the district posted a closed session agenda notice for, um, two nights from this evening related to the real property negotiations, which indicates that the district, um, is discussing, uh, properly in closed session, uh, negotiation of pricing terms of payment with another developer, Summer Hill Homes. Next slide. Um, a little bit about the city's role in processing a development proposal. Um, the zoning of the property is R1. Um, importantly, there is a general plan policy, um, that was established some years ago with a twelve acre recreation requirement that's specifically in the general plan. So any development that included less than twelve acres just, uh, dedicated to recreation use would require a general plan amendment. Um, a little bit about cooperation with D.R. Horton. Um, staff, uh, engaged with D.R. Horton, um, shortly after they entered into a purchase agreement with the, uh, school district, uh, preliminary review application, uh, which is a common, um, process for a development such as this was submitted. Staff provided preliminary feedback on the, uh, preliminary application. Um, and then subsequently in the May-June period, uh, we established regular status calls with the developer to review development issues, um, and attempts to cooperate with, um, the developer. As it moved forward, uh, we had hoped for a formal, uh, development application, but that did not happen. Next slide. Um, how can the city best facilitate development? Um, uh, most importantly, in a case like this where you have a regional, uh, or local, um, peer agency with a piece of property that needs to go through the city entitlement process, cooperation is most important. Um, we, um, continue the City Manager to engage with the superintendent and we are hopeful that during this next, um, engagement between the district and a new developer, that, that, uh, cooperation is enhanced. Um, another point is, um, that we believe will facilitate a positive, um, engagement with this new developer is to proceed with an economic analysis to quantify the value of that general plan recreation requirement. Um, uh, it's, uh, common in a case like this that a development agreement, uh, would be negotiated. That would be in the interest of the city as well as the developer. And having the value of that general plan, um, recreation requirement, um, in the beginning of the process would be helpful. So the city, um, has, uh, retained a, uh, economic consulting firm that has worked with the city on other community benefit agreements, um, to quantify that general plan requirement. Um, another option which the city has not, um, proceeded with, um, would be to create development standards for the site, um, that would be, um, established, that would provide more certainty to the developer. Uh, and as we know, this could be completed with or without the participation of the property owner. Um, and it could provide more certainty, um, to the developer in terms of the number of acres for recreation fields, whether the city would consider less than twelve, uh, if the developer provided additional resources for, um, enhancements to recreation fields, uh, elsewhere in the community as an example. Um, so that is, uh, another option in terms of, uh, how the city could facilitate development, uh, in the future. Next slide. In terms of next steps, um, the proceeding with the economic study, as I mentioned, uh, valuing the general plan recreation requirement, um, that will be important, uh, resource and, uh, value for both the city and the prospective developer. Um, the city staff could, um, return to the city council with, um, what, um, the creation of development standards would look like, options as well as cost estimates. That would be something that, um, uh, proceeding with the creating development standards on the property would be something that the city council, uh, would have to authorize at some point in the future. Um, and, uh, uh, as I mentioned earlier, most importantly, um, continuing to offer cooperation with the school district and a new developer. Um, with the new developer, um, uh, we believe that it would be in everyone's interest to engage with the district now, uh, and the developer, even in advance of them having, um, uh, consummated a purchase agreement. Um, we also think that given the high profile of the site and the long history of the site as an important resource for the community, the recreation and the soccer and recreation community, that, um, providing city council, brief city council updates such as this, um, and engaging the city council committee as needed, um, will be important, um, to ensure that you are kept up to date on, uh, on the process. And that, I believe, is the last slide. And, and we, uh, turn it back over to the City Manager.
Yeah. So, so thank you, Craig. Uh, and let me close out, uh, by stepping a little bit on the balcony here, uh, and putting what we're talking about in context. Uh, and so while, uh, the site is owned by another public agency, in many ways, uh, certainly for the city's entitlement process, it's almost analogous to the site being owned by a private property owner. Uh, and so it's also important to note that the city staff, uh, has been engaged with the San Mateo Union High School District before they released their, their RFQ, um, during, uh, during, uh, the process as they were, uh, reviewing, uh, proposals. And we stand ready and willing to, uh, sit down with either the Union High School District and/or their selected developer on how to, uh, maintain the principles of the general plan, uh, recreation requirement of twelve acres or look at modifications. Uh, and the, the council will know that, uh, we had prior conversations with the district, uh, where the district, uh, was going to fund a study to look at potential, uh, recreation, both onsite and offsite options for soccer. The district, uh, chose not to do that and we brought it to the city council to undertake that work. Uh, similarly, uh, in the conversations that we were having with the developer, uh, there was a willingness to engage in this economic study that, uh, Craig Wytham mentioned. Uh, but now that that developer, uh, has, has dropped out, uh, the, the city, uh, is, is taking on that effort. I've authorized that, uh, because I believe that it is extremely important that we know the value of that, uh, general plan, um, requirement. Uh, and we do know that, uh, with any developer, uh, that steps forward, we will be negotiating, uh, around a, a, uh, general plan amendment. And, and, and having that information and having it readily available is extremely important for the city. Uh, and lastly, with regard to developing, uh, development standards, uh, it is something that we're looking into. There will be a cost to this effort, uh, and we are looking at ways to, um, have that cost reimbursed by the future, uh, property owner, uh, either in a fee, uh, that will be applied, uh, to, uh, that area or another mechanism. Uh, it's also important to note that we engaged the services of, of Craig Wytham under a reimbursement agreement, uh, with the developer. And so now that that developer has backed out, uh, the city, uh, is in a position where we need to make a decision on where, uh, we, we go from here, uh, we stand, uh, ready, willing, uh, to, uh, to talk about that, uh, recreation requirement. But we also need to be prepared when that happens, uh, which is why valuing, uh, those acres, uh, is, is an important process. And so we will complete the analysis on the development standard process and bring that to the city council with both cost estimates, uh, and, uh, an analysis of the pros and cons and how long that process will take. Thank you.
Okay. If we could, uh, not do the share screen at this time, please? Thank you. Um, we will now, uh, go to colleagues for, uh, questions of Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was wondering if, um, because I believe all of council got a couple of emails about the condition of the fields. If staff could provide some background on the historical field maintenance agreements that were up there? Who was responsible and, um, who did what? And at what point did the city, uh, was no longer involved? That's my first question, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Uh, why don't I ask, uh, why don't I ask Director, um, Matola to be brought in, uh, to, to provide that overview? Uh, and so as she's coming in, uh, Councilmember Medina, at a high level, uh, pre-COVID-nineteen, uh, the city did maintain the fields in partnership with soccer groups. Once the district, uh, made a unilateral decision to close the fields during COVID-nineteen and let them deteriorate further, uh, the district took on the responsibility of, of, of the rehab, uh, in working with also the soccer groups. And so we have heard the, the concerns about the conditions, uh, of the fields today. Uh, however, the city, uh, is not, um, maintaining, uh, those fields. Director Matola, is she in the room?
I am trying to get her in the room.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that does answer my question. Um, the time that, the difficulty with, or maybe the question is, how long did it take to get the fields open to the public compared to when the city park was available to the public? Um, they were, they were chained shut, from my understanding.
Yes, uh, Council, uh, or, or Vice Mayor Medina, can I ask for a clarification? The question is, how long did it take for the fields to be rehabilitated when the city was rehabilitating the fields? Um, what's the connection to City Park? I'm sorry.
No problem. Um, I, I guess there was, my view was, there was, it appeared to be some difficulty in getting the fields to be unlocked so people could either walk. And then there's addition, there was additional difficulty in, in getting an agreement to allow the soccer groups to have access to the fields. And understandably now, I was up there this past weekend, um, that the fields are in really bad shape. And of course, because the gophers there are notorious. And, uh, these, I'm understanding that soccer groups are working with the district staff to, to get them in a playable shape. So, um, it just seemed like there was some difficulty and, and I'm sorry for not, for not being, um, a little bit more clear on this. This is the council's first public, uh, information that we're getting regarding the subcommittee that was meeting and, and, um, so, so that's kind of where I guess, uh, I have, this question is just kind of a little hard to, to articulate. It just seems like the communication there wasn't, uh, coming forward read- readily. And why, why, what was the, what was the problem that?
Sure, so, so.
I mean, we just finished to give you, to give you the tie into City Park. People are work, walking outside and, and yet the school district didn't want our residents to walk on the track. So they were, they were chained shut. And, and what's, I wonder why, 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 why was that so? When City Park, people could walk around and just wanted to hear staff's response on what they thought the reason was. It wasn't very, it was, it was interesting. I'll leave it at that.
Sure. So the answer to that question is simple, but, but probably not as complete as you would like. Um, the Union High School District decided to lock the fields. There was a time, if we think back to COVID, uh, where you could not, um, have, uh, team play on the fields. And so the rationale that we were provided in the community, uh, was provided for that unilateral action by the district was due to COVID-nineteen and the, at that time, state prohibition against, uh, group practice or play. Um, over a few months, uh, tha- that ceased, uh, and there was, was state guidance that rolled out, um, uh, over, over time, allowing group, group practices and games and scrimmages and things like that. Uh, and there was a point where the district, uh, would not reopen the fields, even though our City Park and other facilities were open. Uh, why the di- district decided not to do that, uh, I think is a question for the district. There was engagement both by city staff and by the city council subcommittee and strong articulation, uh, for the community, the soccer groups and, uh, the district, uh, keeping to the spirit of the agreement that we had had, uh, for a long time. Uh, and so, uh, through those conversations, uh, and partnership with, with, uh, law and NAYSO, uh, the district did agree, uh, on a temporary basis, uh, it is their, uh, it is their property to reopen the fields for the soccer season. Uh, and there were conversations on who would re- rehabilitate those fields. Uh, and, uh, at the end of the day, it was the district who took the responsibility for rehabilitating the fields. Uh, and as we said before, they had deteriorated significantly during the time that they were closed. And I, I know, I know members of the committee, um, were, were a part of those discussions, so happy to, um, uh, have any of them chime in.
I'm mute, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Did that, uh, answer your question on that one?
Yeah, that, that's mine. Yeah, yeah. Uh, what could be shared about the reason for the sale not being completed?
The city is not party to that, uh, purchase and sell agreement. The city. The city was not a part of the negotiations with the developer and the district. I think that there were a number of reasons that we did have conversations and frankly, very positive conversations with D.R. Horton with regard to the process and the dedication requirement. Like our property negotiations, those negotiations between D.R. Horton and the district occurred in private, and we do not know the precise reasons.
Thank you. As for the cost recovery on all the time that was expended for D.R. Horton, is all of that recoverable?
All, go ahead, Craig.
Sure, D.R. Horton executed a developer reimbursement agreement in March, and the Community Economic Development Department is, I believe, doing the final accounting. And I believe the deposit, Pamela can jump in if she has more current information. But we believe that the deposit will cover the city costs incurred up until the developer informed the city in late July that it was no longer in contract.
And let me expand upon that because the vice mayor's question was, is the developer paying for all of the city's costs? They are paying for the cost between the time of March and late July that we had a developer reimbursement agreement. However, it is important to note that the city did engage and spend significant staff time way before March of 2021. The general plan requirement in soccer is an issue of high community interest. There is a significant public benefit to that. And during the council meetings and prior to the council meetings, there was significant staff time that the city expended in furtherance of the public benefit provided by soccer there. As well as there's the time now, post the developer, D.R. Horton, no longer being engaged with the property, where we are spending resources to close it out, knowing that there will be a reactivation and we're spending staff time and some consultant time analyzing strategy as we talked about with regard to the development standard process. So we protect the spirit of the general plan and the public good intended by the city's general plan.
Thank you. I'm just going to note that cost recovery will be at the new rate starting on September 1st.
Yeah, so the city's fees did increase September 1st. And so whether it was D.R. Horton or a future developer, they will pay the new rates.
Great. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for the follow-up. And just an answer to Vice Mayor Medina's question around closing the fields. In one of our two-by-two meetings, they did say that all the fields of the San Mateo Union High School District were closed at the same time. And as far as the opening goes, there was significant advocacy made to open the fields. One of our supervisors was involved. And I want to thank Supervisor Dave Pine for facilitating and assisting with getting the fields open as well as the San Mateo Union High School District for really coming to the table and trying to identify a way for our community to be able to use the fields again. But there was significant advocacy to reopen the fields. But the fields closed, we were told, were closed across the board at all the Union High School District properties at the same time. And then I just wanted to thank City Manager Grogan and Director Pam Wu because, you know, they've done a really good job of representing the city and what the city wants to see around the site. You know, the, these conversations in the two-by-two committee initially started with the perception from some that do not live in San Bruno that the measure that passed a couple of years ago to improve cappuccino was the substitute for Crestmore. And I think that our city manager has done a good job in ensuring that, you know, that is not what the ballot measure said. That's not what was guaranteed, that is not a substitute for what's being, you know, taken by the community. But in addition, what's required by our general plan. And so as much as we want to work with the Union High School District, there are partners. Our kids go to the Union High School District schools as a city. We also want to make sure that we're representing our community and that, you know, we're being good neighbors. So, you know, thanks to the Union High School District, we're going to continue to work with you in our two-by-two committee. But we're, you know, this is, I think, still just the beginning. It seems like we still have a ways to go. And so it's been a very delicate matter, but I am really glad to say that the fields are reopening for the soccer community. And I just learned about the softball community through some emails this week. So I'm not quite sure what that schedule looks like, or I know city staff is looking into that further. But, you know, hopefully, working together, we're going to be able to come to some solution. So thank you.
And to add on to what Councilmember Mason said, yes, all fields were closed. Cappuccino did open prior to Crestmore, but then it was regulated what hours, there was only certain hours that you could be there, there had to be a staff member posted at the field in order to ensure that there was distance and that all the rules were being followed. However, when Crestmore opened, another concern and why I think there was the advocacy that the council member speaks of is because with cappuccino, though they were trying to assist the soccer community, obviously, when they did their fields, which are not, my understanding is September of 2022, is when they would be completed, obviously, it gave very little areas at all to where the soccer community could be accommodated. So that was a reason. So yes, I was up there and the fields are not in good condition, which was a concern of the high school districts. But, you know, again, the volunteers that we have in a lot of our fields are really doing their best and their utmost to provide that avenue and opportunity for our youth in soccer community. Is there any other questions? Okay. Seeing none at this time, then we will go ahead and move on to the next item. Unless City Manager, was there anything you needed to conclude with?
No, thank you to the council. And we will return to you with a recommendation and analysis of potentially implementing development standards for the property to provide clarity and further incentivize development of the site that will be consistent with the spirit of the general plan.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on, continue on the agenda to item C under announcements. All residents and visitors to San Bruno are encouraged to get the COVID-19 vaccine. Find a local site by visiting myturn.ca.gov or by calling 1-833-422-4255. Councilmember Hamilton, nice to have you back. And let's move on to item D. Join us at 5:30 PM, that's this Friday, on August 27th at the San Bruno City Park Rotary Pavilion, which is located at 251 City Parkway in San Bruno for San Bruno's new Recreation and Aquatic Center groundbreaking ceremony. The ceremony is a milestone of the project and is a very exciting time for our community. The final, also that night, the final concert for 2021 season will be held immediately following at 6:00 PM at the Rotary Pavilion as well. Moving on to item E. September 9th, 2021 marks 11 years since the natural gas pipeline explosion and fire in the Crestmore neighborhood. While we continue to heal, we will never forget those that were lost and the residents that were affected by the tragedy and how our community's true resilience continues to shine through that very difficult time. To learn more about the moment in our city's history, you can visit www.sanbruno.ca.gov slash 10 year, 10 years, excuse me, later. I just wanted to make note on that, that I met with an Aaron Johnson, Mr. Johnson, the Vice President for the Bay Area Region or PG&E now, which is our region, and we were up at the park and walked it and talked about then, talked about now, and talked about the future with the rack and the community and some of our concerns and interests going forward. With that, we will move on to consent calendar. Are there any items under consent that people want to have removed for a separate vote, separate vote? Not seeing any. Are there items?
Actually, I'm sorry, I was a little slow on the button there, but I would like to pull item J for a separate vote.
Got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So J will be a separate. Anything else for a separate vote? Okay, seeing none, this is for comments or statements that need to be made. I have two, it will be F and I, and it will just be a comment. Are there any others from the council members? Okay, seeing none. We start with, why don't we do F? That's a point myself is the voting delegate to represent the city of San Bruno at the annual business meeting of the 2021 League of Cities Annual Conferences in Sacramento. What also we always do too is have an alternate, things happen. And so I want to, within this action, include that Vice Mayor Medina also be included as the voting and attendee alternate. And since we have the same last names, it would make it very easy on reservations. Going on to I, adopt a resolution approving Amendment Number Five to Employment Agreement between the city of San Bruno and Mark Zaffarano, City Attorney. And I need to read this as is required by code and law. Per Government Code Section 54953C3, Item 5I, would approve a 2% salary adjustment for the city attorney to a salary of $240,374, retroactive to February 7, 2021. There are no other changes in the compensation. And then we'll move on to item J. And if there's questions on any of that, we'll get through once we go to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager execute a contract with WRECO for design of the Huntington Avenue Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $916,945 and approving a $300,000 from Measure A funds. Councilmember.
Thank you. And so the reason I wanted this one pulled for a separate vote is that I do intend to not support this item. As the council may recall, back when this item first came to us for a decision on which option we would choose, I felt that spending the almost $7 million on a short stretch of bike track was incredibly expensive and not the right choice. I believe normally I would, you know, once a decision has been made, I would just support it and move along with it. But I think that this is another opportunity for us to rethink that decision, especially given all of the other shortfalls we've seen in our budgets. I feel that the additional $4 million that this option will consume could very well be spent on other projects, including repairing potholes and fixing other streets that the community has also prioritized. And so since this is coming back to us, I would offer to the council that, you know, that they perhaps reconsider that at this time. But I intend not to support that item.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your comments and explanation. I'd like to take two actions. One, I want to go ahead and take care of all consent items with the exception of J. Then I want to go back to J to see if there's comments and dialogue, and then we'll vote on that one separately. So at this time, for all items on consent other than J, is there any council action?
True.
Motion seconded. Third, and to go ahead and approve all items on consent with the exception of J, roll call please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Now we will, thank you very much, City Clerk. Now we will go back to item J and Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Salazar. We had a pretty extensive discussion on this and the, I was wondering if staff could briefly go over the project and the the available funding that we have in grants for the design and the overall project costs. We don't have the money now, but when the, if and when the money becomes available, I think is what we talked a lot about. I totally understand Councilman Salazar's point. It is a lot of money, it is a short segment of street, but it's also a big part of the plan to improve bikeability in San Bruno. And just wanted to hear what staff had to say, just to kind of fully have it out here to go through this. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Sure, again, City Manager Javon Grogan, thank you, Haywon Ritchie, for coming on the screen. I was going to turn it over to you after a few brief comments. So not to replicate the conversation that we had before, but certainly in light of Councilmember Salazar's question or comments and Vice Mayor Medina's request, we can certainly provide an overview. Just as a high level, connecting our downtown, our Caltrain to Tanfran and the Job Center that Soft City is planning just on our border, as well as what a reconfigured Tanfran is, connecting those two areas to a cycle track, separated bike and pedestrian path is critically important. Having a beautiful design is critically important. And the recommendation from staff was that doing it and also maintaining the travel lanes that are there is a important concept. And so that is part of the reason for the increase in cost from the original design. And as additional development happens along our transit corridors, having that bike and pedestrian path to connect the BART station simply to Caltrain, we do believe will generate in less traffic, less vehicle traffic because people will be able to get to the Job Centers in our downtown using that bike and pay a corridor. It is absolutely true that the project is unfunded. We do have grants that are funded and we are on a grant timeline to expend those monies. And so the money that we are proposing to do this work with and expend, meet that grant target. It is interim director Ritchie, will you please give an overview of the unfunded amount? I want to say it's four, three to four million dollars at this point, but I just don't want to quote it from the top. But we are looking to cover that in a number of ways. Yes, potentially new grants, utilizing development impact fees or community benefits for projects both in San Bruno and that may occur outside of San Bruno that are adjacent to the area. Yes, it's true that any money we receive, whether it's development impact fees or community benefits, could go to any number of needed improvements in the city. And so I'm not saying that to counter what Councilmember Salazar said. But I just wanted to make that point that we are certainly striving to have a fully funded project and knowing that we don't want to do that to the detriment of some of our, of the resources we have today. Director Ritchie?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Grogan. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. Haywon Ritchie, interim Public Works Director. Councilmember Salazar, I would like to address your concern and regarding this item. I would like to clarify that there were two segments that were proposed for design, which is the first segment from Herman to Huntington, sorry, Herman to San Bruno Avenue close to the Caltrain Station. And that half is fully funded with, you know, mostly grant fundings, there is some local match associated with that. But the direction at the time was to also look into funding the design for the entire portion. And so And so um because the grants are going to the southern half, which is from Huntington to the Caltrain State, sorry, from Herman to the Caltrain Station, um that is fully funded. Um and in order to do the design of the northern half, that's where the additional uh three hundred thousand dollar appropriation is coming from, because the grant is fully funding the southern half of the project. Um and so uh I would say that um, you know, we are able to do half with primarily grant funding. And so you know, to consider um not uh, you know, potentially uh denying the whole project um based on a portion of that being unfunded and um to clarify, the southern half is where it's anticipating to be about two and a half million to three million dollars, and then the northern half um is the four million dollars that's currently unfunded.
All right. And 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 just to clarify, yeah, the the four, four point two million dollars is the piece that i- is a concern to me. Uh mostly because um, you know, we 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 did have a a viable alternative that could have been completely funded with the existing funds, uh although not as elaborate and probably not as attractive as the one that we are choosing, but um the additional four million dollars, which has yet to be identified, uh I believe uh could be used in a lot of different places. And and I I realize that this is an important segment because of the fact of it's connecting uh job centers to to our our transit points. Uh but there's also been uh requests from residents to improve the cycle tracks from their residences down to the the transit centers, and those aren't being addressed. And you know, those four million dollars uh, once we do identify them, could also be used for those projects. So um, you know, really my concern here is that we, you know, we're um we're buying the Rolls Royce, um we we could do with the Chevy, and uh we could actually buy a few Chevys with this money and actually get a lot more mileage out of this, so. Um that's why I I still really can't support this, but thank you for the uh for the additional information.
Councilmember Hamilton?
My understanding was that the 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 principal difference between the option that we that we um approved and the like like the less expensive option was the um that the less expensive option removed a lane from Huntington. And that was the that, I'm not voting for this because it's nicer. I'm not voting for this because it's because I want us to have a Rolls Royce instead of a Chevy. I'm voting for this because removing a lane on Huntington, when we know that we're going to have thousands of cars going to that new center um in across the border in South City that are gonna be using that every day, and hearing directly from our police chief, who's where we have the police station on that stretch of road and he's and hearing from the police chief that that um saying that he would be adamantly against removing a lane from Huntington. Those were the reasons that I'm voting for this, not because it's it's nicer or flashier. I agree with you. I wish it was cheaper. I do. I do. Um I do think this is a lot of money, and I do think that that money could be, if if we were able to um repurpose it to other places, that would be great. But it that's not, that was not one of the options. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues on J? Um just, I am, I had been then uh as far as not uh wishing the lane being discontinued. I think it's just um, I I just find it uh challenging to have one lane on Huntington in addition to, I think uh it's solidified with our chief, just concerned with safety and other elements and getting to and from locations from our department as well. Uh but it is, the Councilmember Salazar is is correct. We, City Manager is correct, there is a time element a ba- uh base from the one point four to the two million dollars that Transportation Authority issued. There's a a window in which to utilize that, but it it is costly. There is no doubt that Councilmember Salazar is correct about other desires from the rest of our community as well. Vice Mayor Medina?
Thank you, um. Great questions. Um gotta support my chief of police when he says to do not take a lane. My question to staff now is if they could provide some additional information on the scheduling of how long it's anticipated this design would take. And we would have the funding to do the southern portion. And when we secure the funds for the northern portion is when we would proceed with construction at that point. Is that correct?
Uh City Manager or Director Ritchie?
I think part of that question with regard to uh timing, uh Director Ri- Ritchie should answer. And so uh Haywon, can you take that and then I'll take the financial?
Um yes, it is on a a fast track because we are um um trying to meet the deadlines. Um the phase one design completion is anticipated in July and August. Um because this is federal funds, um there are quite a few um hoops we need to jump through in in order to obtain um authorization to proceed with construction, but um that is our our current deadline for design.
With with regards to funding uh the additional uh four million dollars, as uh Director Ritchie mentioned, a portion uh is or portion one is fully funded, and there's a remaining gap. Uh and so uh we are first and foremost looking to community benefits and development impact fees. Uh there are a number um of avenues there. I'll just frankly talk about uh two. We are uh actively in negotiations with um uh the uh development uh that is planned to occur in South San Francisco, right at Huntington and Snee. Uh South Line is 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 the developer, uh or South Line is the name of the of the project. I'm I'm actually blanking on the developers. Lane Partners is the developer. So we're actively in negotiations with uh Lane Partners for community benefits tied to that project. In addition, uh in just a few weeks, the city council will have the Bay Hill specific plan in U two phase one. Uh that comes with a total uh financial benefit package of a hundred and thirty million over a uh twenty-year DA. Uh however, as a part of that DA, there uh is a uh prepayment for phases one and two uh that will total fifty-six million. A portion of that is development impact fees and twenty-six million of that is community benefits. Uh so the city uh could uh should that approval happen and 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 that project be the source, you could utilize those funds. Uh we are again actively in negotiations with Lane Partners. Uh and then there 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 are other uh projects in the area as well, uh as well as um the the Tanfran, which I think will come later than uh the timeline for this, but there may be funds there um that that could be uh shifted around uh if if not funded. So at a high level, know that we're working on it uh and and know that there uh are are areas, um but we are we are planning for that better tomorrow for San Bruno.
Mr. Mayor?
Very, is that good, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I I don't think if my answer, like we see the answer exactly, and we we rephrase the question. So the four point two million gap is for the northern portion? So we have enough funds to do the southern portion. Preferably, you do it all at once. But if we had a hiccup in our budget, is staff prepared to do it in phases?
Yes, that is currently how it is structured in phases.
Okay. So we would, there would be a span of time where we would uh have the opportunity to determine where our funding would come from, being that the design would be completed July, August, and then it then it would go out for bid. We would see that decision be made, obviously, maybe October, November of twenty twenty-two.
Uh roughly, uh approximately, yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to get a rough timeline. So there is time um on our side there. I am in support of this project. I understand the cost of it. I understand the vision that we want to be able to have um safe routes for bicyclists to to go from Tanfran to the Caltrain Station. Um I wanted to express a little bit of apprehension regarding the agreements being negotiated with Lane Partners without knowing what we're talking about there. At some point, the council's gonna be involved in that, so my concern is not being involved to hear what that is until the last minute. And I know how difficult it it is to uh negotiate from the dais. So I would ask for some clarification as we get further down the road on that to to be involved in it.
Um, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, um so we don't necessarily need to um find the four million by October. Um we have all the funding that's needed to do the southern half. And what this um recommendation is, is that the northern half be designed so that when the funding does become available and staff does actively try to obtain grant funding. Um and if that were to be successful, that could be, that that would be phase, that could be phased at a later date, so we wouldn't necessarily um need to try to find the funding before then. I mean, if we did, um that's, of course, uh they could be constructed at the same time. Um however, this project on the southern half is not contingent on having full funding for both phases.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to um clarify a a few other points. So I I am also definitely, absolutely in favor of safe bicycle routes. And you know, if we really wanted to do a cheap uh solution, we could just paint green arrows on the street and have bikes shared with cars, but I I know that's not what we're after. And we did have a a viable solution that was a a much more affordable solution in in my in my opinion uh that still would have given us that, although uh as uh Councilmember Hamilton uh mentioned, it would have been at the cost of of a lane. Another point I wanted to make there is that we also saw the traffic study associated with this showed that the uh traffic conditions would degrade to um letter grade F um regardless of what we do, whether or not we take away the lane, it's it's gonna degrade anyway. Uh that's just uh it's it's what anticip- what's anticipated. So the uh the traffic will become horrible. Um so I I believe if uh PD has a concern, uh they should still have a concern uh about the location of their um station. Uh fortunately, uh most calls for police, uh unlike fire, don't originate from the the police station. And the the units are out uh patrolling a beat, and they're in the community usually when the calls come in, and so they won't necessarily need to respond from that station. Um as I mentioned, as opposed to a a call for fire, which would probably uh originate at Station fifty-one or fifty-two. Um and uh and and so then, you know, I I that that to me helps um with that concern, although the chief did say it was a concern to him. Uh I I don't think that uh this particular option um actually makes anything any different or any better. And if we are looking for a community benefit, I believe uh relocating that station away from uh an area that's so isolated and is i- inevitably gonna be impacted would be uh something that we should uh be looking to uh resolve. And um, you know, and and I know that there is um a lot of revenue that's being anticipated. We've put a lot of things in place that will uh start paying off as development continues, but um yeah, I wanna go back to something that our city manager told us a while ago, and that was if you find yourself in a hole, you stop digging. Uh we're in a hole, and this four million dollars is another few shovelfuls of dirt that puts us farther deeper in where we are. And so when we started looking at revenue sources, it was to address existing uh deficits. And if we keep creating more deficits, um we're not gonna get out of the hole. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Uh Councilmember Mason, please.
Yeah, I just um wanna say, do you think it's important to have a lane provided that eleven thousand employees expected to um go to the new facility that South City's building, and we don't know what's gonna happen with Tanfran at this point? That could be a significant, you know, significantly more traffic. Um and I think the city is looking at alternatives as far as where the police department's eventually gonna go. Um where I think this council has been prudent financially was when we had Posey Park and we selected the, I think, you know, one point five million dollar option that was less um than the most expensive option that was proposed. Um but this really is an area where I think that we need to look forward and look at how we're gonna mitigate traffic. And I don't think that we can um, uh I don't know who it was, but at one point somebody said like, wish cars away. I think it's gonna be a long time before we get there. And hopefully by the time we get there, we have the money to, you know, carry out the plan that Councilmember Salazar sees, you know, sees fit, which I think would be great in the future. Um I did wanna just actually jump in to make sure that the city manager's clear on funding, cuz I know I walk around and people say, well, you're getting a hundred million dollars from YouTube and you know, I wanna, I think it's important that we kinda have set the stage right now. Um do do we have a hundred million right now, and are we even close to that number? Um and I I just wanna be clear that my understanding is that unless the development occurs, we are not gonna get that money. And so um I just don't want anybody who's watching to think that we're sitting on all this money um and and not using it.
Sure. Um uh I I can caveat that further. Uh I I thought I used a lot of gifts there. Um but but absolutely, there uh the U two phase one, uh as well as the Bay Hill specific plan, uh did receive unanimous approval from the Planning Commission and will be uh in the next few weeks coming forward to the city council. City Council doesn't have to approve, uh so it is a recommendation. And so that that's the biggest caveat, one, the city council has to approve it. We approved the the Bay Hill specific plan. Uh should you approve U two phase one, uh you still can't make anyone build. Um uh U two uh has throughout this process, this more than sort of four million dollar endeavor uh on their part, um just in city fees, uh ha- has been concurrently processing their phase one. Uh and in our uh development agreement negotiations that is codified in the materials that went to the Planning Commission and will be before you, they have agreed to uh prepay uh the fees for phases one and two uh when they receive their foundation permit, uh which we anticipate to occur based on the current schedule in twenty uh twenty-two. Uh the 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 revenue to the city for that um phase one and phase two payment will come in a number of buckets. Development impact fees, affordable housing fees, area impact fees. I know these are sort of uh terms that everyone will not relate to, as well as community benefits. And so, you know, we we articulated that at the Planning Commission. We will rearticulate all of that at the city council um uh meeting, uh at meetings, plural, uh that that we will discuss that project. Uh but yes, it it is a um uh it is a planning effort, uh and a and a um property owner slash developer that uh is making commitments to invest, but until those investments occur uh and the, it is a twenty-year uh development agreement, and so with five phases. And so uh there will be quite some time before that uh that that revenue is received in there, uh certainly a caveat with development. So I hope that that clarifies.
We also have members of the public, if you have um thoughts or comments, um I do see we have um somebody has raised their hand. If anybody else, please feel free to do it at this time. And City Clerk, if you could bring them in.
Yes, Paul Wapinski?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, if the uh the plan is to use BART and Caltrain and ride your bike, why is traffic gonna get exponentially bad? That's my question.
And that is the only hand raised. Mayor Medina, you are muted. I'm sorry. It appears as though the mayor may be having technical difficulties. Vice Mayor, did you want to?
Got it. Give one second. He's giving me a call on the phone. Is this okay?
Sure. In the meantime, um Councilmember Mason, if you want to go ahead, your hand is raised.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, give me call. All right, I'm good. The mayor is having technical difficulties. So, um, there's a question from the public. Does staff have the ability to answer that question?
Sure. Uh, let's turn it over to our, uh, city engineer and acting public works director, uh, Haywon Ritchie.
Yes, thank you. Um, I will do my best to try to answer, answer this, uh, transportation, traffic engineering, um, question. My understanding is that there is a model and, um, built into that model is future growth that's anticipated, um, throughout the region. And, um, you know, with increased population growth, um, there is increased traffic also, um, modeled along with that growth. Um, and so I believe the, um, emphasis moves towards trying to make, uh, multimodal transportation more appealing and, um, and attempting to, um, have more workers and people use public transportation and other modes of travel such as, um, bicycling and walking.
Take our mayor's back.
I think, I, I think I'm back. Thank you very much, Mr. Medina. Um, councilmember Mason, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just kind of saying that we wouldn't, um, generally had any discussions with the public, but just from the last update that we had received from the new South City development, which will go through San Bruno streets. Mr. Wapinski, you may, you may, may not know, but they're anticipating 11,000 employees and building parking for 6,000 of them, which means that those 6,000 would likely be going through us, through our streets. Um, and that doesn't include, uh, the Sky Park that was sold to Amazon. That's acres, um, that's, you know, a couple acres. I mean, um, apologies, that's, that's expected to have a number of employees, which we don't know yet how many. And that also doesn't include the San Fran and what the plans for that are. So we know for sure that it's at least going to be anticipated 11,000 employees. And that's just the South City development. Um, and again, they're, they're building 6,000 parking slots, uh, according to the last update that council got.
City manager.
Yes, I was going to chime in, uh, after, uh, director with Ritchie and just add that what that traffic analysis showed for the area along Huntington is not atypical for transit-centered areas. Just on the balcony, uh, in regions like ours, um, the expectation is that growth will happen around transit. This area is transit-rich, one-on-one, two-eighty, three-eighty BART, Caltrain, high-capacity bus route, as well as a stone's throw from SFO. And so it's not, uh, surprising that any traffic analysis in, um, areas of San Bruno, irrespective of, 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 of the projects we're talking about, will show a increase in traffic. And what, uh, is shown here is a increase even with, uh, additional multimodal bike and pedestrian. And so that is, I think, part of the rationale for doing this project is because the cycle track, um, will increase multimodal, uh, 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 transportation and provide that linkage to BART and Caltrain and those job centers in our downtown where we have U zone two. And so over time, we'll have more housing units. And so having that, that is important to get people out of their cars to, uh, decrease the amount of traffic that we're have, that we will see, even though you're at, um, the, the conversation we're having is absolutely right. Traffic will degrade, um, even at the sort of no project scenario, uh, that, that was analyzed.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing, uh, no more at this time. Is there any action from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Uh, make a motion to approve.
There's a motion made.
One second.
There's a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
No.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Yes.
Motion carries, board of one.
Okay, that concludes consent. Now we'll move on to conduct of business. Item A, city clerk, please.
Item six A, waive first reading and introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Bruno, amending and re-adopting portions of Title 10 of the San Bruno municipal code, including a disposable food service wear ordinance.
Now we'll turn this over to our city attorney, Mr. Zaffarano.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. If you'll just give me a moment to share my screen, I'll start the presentation. Is everyone able to see the screen? Excellent. Right, well, welcome. And, uh, you'll see that also present with us is Jacinta Lang, a management analyst with the Public Works Department. And, um, you're, we're all very excited to have her here tonight. She is actually the main event for the, um, revisions to this ordinance. But I'm going to kick off the presentation and then I'll turn it over to her because the most important part of tonight's presentation is an ordinance that she has been working on with the county of San Mateo and, uh, other cities regarding disposable, uh, food service wear. So let's start out briefly and go over the agenda. We're going to go over a little background. Uh, we're going to discuss and introduce, uh, some of the amendments, the Title 10. And as I mentioned, there'll be a separate staff presentation, so you won't have to listen to me for very long, regarding the disposable food service wear ordinance. And then we'll talk about next steps. Finally, we'll take any questions regarding the chapters in Title 10 that we're addressing tonight. So, uh, we're doing, uh, well, let's go back and, uh, briefly review what we've done. So the city council started this project to revise the municipal code back in late 2018. And there are 11 titles. Title 12 is the zoning code and that's being separately updated. And as we recall, the primary focus is to update it for internal consistency and current law. And of course, we've had numerous policy discussions about many of the provisions of all of the titles that we've gone through so far, culminating with Title Seven this evening. And, uh, I appreciate the city council's action on that. So we're doing something a little bit unusual tonight. We're taking Title 10 out of order. And you might wonder, well, what happened to Titles Eight and Nine? And the answer to that is those are being deferred, uh, primarily because it was important from a timing standpoint to bring, uh, this ordinance to you now for disposable food service wear. An important caveat, there are two sections of Title 10 that we are going to come back, uh, with later this year, actually. It's titled, it's a chapter 10.16 about water conservation and 10.22 to implement a new state law regarding, uh, recycling and, um, and so on. So staff is working on those ordinances as well. And, uh, we, the city council needs to review, uh, various, uh, plans regarding water consumption and conservation before 10.16 can be approved. And we have some additional work on 10.22. So you'll see those coming to you later this year. And then, uh, at that point, we'll be finished with Title 10 and we can go back to the remaining three titles. So let's take just a moment to, uh, look at Title 10. And, um, the good news is that we're really only proposing three very minor amendments to three of the sections in Title 10. So there are 16 chapters, uh, 10.04, there is a minor amendment there. Nothing in 10.08, again, a minor amendment in 10.12. And that was amended already in, in 2012, so that's fairly recent. And then we don't have any amendments proposed to 10.13. That was most recently amended in 2014, so again, quite recently. And then 10.14 for water, we don't have any amendments proposed there. Uh, 10.15, again, no amendments. We, we amended that in 2016. Water conservation, that's the one that we're going to come back to you on later this year. 10.18 stormwater management, we're not proposing anything to that. 10.20 garbage and refuse, that's the second one that we're coming back to you later this year on. And then 10.21 sustainable food packaging. And when I'm done with my presentation, I'll turn it over to Jacinta. She has a separate presentation and I'll stop my screen sharing and she can put hers on. 10.22, we have some minor amendments on that and no amendments for 10.23. 10.24, which is municipal cable, nothing on that, nothing on reusable bags. That was amended relatively recently. Estate video franchises, that was amended in 2008, which is recent enough. And, um, the community choice aggregation program, which was amended in 2016, nothing, nothing is proposed there. So let me go, actually, I'm going to jump to my very last slide. So that way we don't have to put my presentation up after Jacinta's is over. It's kind of clunky to do that. And, um, I'll just let you know where, where we hope to end up tonight after her presentation. So we want to review the proposed amendments. Uh, we're recommending that you waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. Or alternatively, if you have some substantive revisions, we're happy to consider those and reintroduce, uh, those revisions at a subsequent meeting. Jacinta will be telling you shortly that the county is going to be providing education enforcement for those jurisdictions that adopt a disposable footwear ordinance. And then, um, finally, adoption of this ordinance would be scheduled for the next regular city council meeting. And all of the amendments would go into effect 30 days after adoption, except for the, uh, food service wear ordinance, which is proposed to not go into effect until October of 2022. And Jacinta will explain why that is. So after the city council completes, um, Title 10, we'll have three more titles, eight, nine, and 11 after Title 10 is complete. So, um, that concludes my presentation. I'm going to stop my screen sharing. And I'm going to then, uh, ask Jacinta to start her presentation on the disposable food service wear ordinance. Take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mark. I will be sharing my screen now. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. And can everyone see the screen share all right? Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jacinta Liang and I am the management analyst for the Public Works Department. Today I will be introducing the proposed disposable food service wear ordinance, which will amend our current title, Chapter 21, which is the Sustainable Food Packaging Ordinance. I also have with me today, Nsue Lim from the County Office of Sustainability, who is currently spearheading this collaborative county effort. And we will both be available to any, I will both be available to answer any questions after the presentation. So agenda, we will be talking about, um, the goals of the ordinance. I'll be providing a little bit of background information, some details about the county ordinance and then, um, our proposed city ordinance provisions. So our goal tonight is to provide you information about the county's disposable food service wear ordinance in hopes of bringing this, or in hopes of bringing the city, um, ordinance for adoption at our next regular council meeting in September. So about a handful of cities have already adopted and along the peninsula. And, um, we're hoping that San Bruno can be next in line. Some background information, in August 2008, city council adopted a resolution eliminating disposable food service wear composed of polyserine, which is styrofoam, from restaurants and food vendors. And this ordinance was adopted due to the harmful negative environmental impacts that styrofoam had, um, along, um, littering streets, um, harming wildlife and toxic chemicals. Since the adoption of the ordinance, there's been an increasing concern in the community over the impact of disposable food service wear, um, especially items that are made from plastic. And in February 2020 last year, the county repealed its existing styrofoam ban ordinance and they replaced it with a more sustainable ordinance. Because one, plastics end up in the storm drains, the waterways, and it leads to the bay and pollutes the ocean. And about 1.3 million pounds of trash enters the bay every year. And this debris is ingested by marine animals and wildlife. And disposable food service wear such as containers, um, cut cups, lids, um, straws, they make up 80% of the ocean plastic pollution. So the adopted county ordinance requires the use of compostable foodware and reduces the, um, wasteful distribution of accessories such as straws, condiment pack, packets, utensils and napkins. And the main goals of the ordinance is one, eliminate disposable food service wear that is not reusable or compostable. Two, to improve the health and safety of our community members. And three, to help the county meet its regional stormwater permit requirement by reducing street litter. And this has to be, um, done by July 2022. So this ordinance impacts food facilities that operate in the city that provide, um, prepared foods for public consumption. So examples of these food facilities include restaurants, um, mobile food facilities such as food trucks, temporary food facilities, such as street fairs and farmers markets, catering events. And there are some healthcare facilities and private schools. Um, public schools are exempt from this ordinance. And as mentioned earlier, the ordinance will target, um, food facilities that prepare food for public consumption. So this includes any food or drinks that are prepared on-site. And it does not target, um, processed food that has already been prepackaged by the manufacturer. So, um, if you pick up a sandwich or already a salad that's been prepackaged from Trader Joe's or supermarket, those are, um, fine. So under the proposed city ordinance, styrofoam is still prohibited, um, same as our current, same as, um, currently in our existing ordinance. Accessories such as straws, condiment packets, utensils and napkins will only be provided to consumers upon request or at self-service stations. And these accessories and any packaging that these, um, except, uh, accessories come wrapped in, they should be made from non-plastic and compostable materials. Also plates, bowls, cups, um, trays, clamshells and other takeout containers, they should also be non-plastic and compostable as well. And, uh, the county is recommending that we shift away from plastics altogether. And acceptable, acceptable materials that food vendors could use are, um, fiber-based products such as, um, paper, bamboo wood, uh, wheat products. The county will have a available, um, list of, um, materials that comply under the ordinance and that is on their website and is also on our city website as well. It's linked towards their main website. And under this ordinance, there are a couple of exemptions. So one, disposable food service wear that is made for alum, uh, from aluminum. Two, um, plastic straws, for example, they can be provided to consumers with medical reason or if they have medical needs. And three, if there isn't a reasonable, um, alternative that exists that meets the ordinance requirements, that is fine as well. And as mentioned earlier, there is a, um, link with the, um, all the materials that are compliant under the ordinance for our, uh, food facilities and restaurants and any vendors in the city. And for this, the, um, proposed ordinance is not expected to be operative and enforced until October 1st, 2022. So we have a little bit over a year. And, um, this will give the facilities a chance to use up all of their existing inventory of non-conforming food service wear during this time. And, um, as, as Mark mentioned earlier, the county will take lead in education and outreach and enforcement of the ordinance. And, um, this concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions along with Nsue from our county. And I'll, um, Mark, do you have any closing? Are you done with your Title 10? Okay. And, um, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both for your.
Alright, thank you both for your presentations. Do we have questions from colleagues? And if there's any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand at this time. And by state, we will go over and call on you. And first, we will have Councilmember Hamilton, please.
Alright, so have we, so have we done some outreach to our local restaurants and local folks? Who were going to be impacted by this, just to get any kind of initial reaction from folks? And also, I know that some of our, some of our local restaurants are already complying with this, just through their own choice. And do we have any types of numbers as to how many already are, and how many would be compelled to, to change?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. So last month, we sent a hundred eighty mailers in English, Spanish, and Chinese to all the affected food facilities. So we received the list from the county. And we haven't had any pushback, we've had a few questions from some restaurants. Who are just asking for clarification on whether certain items were going to be compliant, or if certain items were going to be. Or what other alternatives they'll be able to use, but we haven't had any pushback. It's been, most of the businesses have been in support of the ordinance. And a lot of them are already using this type of compostable food ware at their, at their premises and at their restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So my question was about the county's version of the ordinance. And typically, the county ordinances apply only to unincorporated areas. So is that the case with, with their ordinance now, and we're passing one to match what they, what they're doing at that level?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Salazar. We are adopting the county's ordinance as a model. So the county's ordinance affects the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of the San Mateo County. And if the city were to adopt it, it would affect the food facilities and the food vendors in our city.
Okay, and does our, the provisions in our ordinance, are they largely in, in alignment completely with the county? Or are there areas that we are either less stringent or more stringent than their version?
We are completely in line with the county's model ordinance.
Okay, and, okay, and as far as what, what the other cities are doing, is it generally expected that all cities will fall in line with these things? Because I, I know one, one thing that, you know, if, if one city does it, it's, it's fine. But we really need cooperation across the entire region to make it work. Because not all the garbage that ends up in San Bruno originates in San Bruno. It could blow in from any area, it could be tossed out of a, a passing car, you never know where it's going to come from. So I, I think it is important that everybody get on board. So do we have any information on what other cities might be doing?
Um, I believe so far about ten cities have adopted. I think the only, I'll turn this over to Insu later to provide more detail. I believe only Half Moon Bay had a special provision, but I believe all the other cities adopted the same provisions as the county. And about right now, probably ten have adopted and already brought it over to their city council. And there's probably a number that are bringing the ordinance to their city council for adoption in the next couple of months.
Great, great, okay. And just one last question, I, I noticed one of the slides, in terms of who it affects. It specifically mentioned private schools, but not public schools, is there an exemption for public schools in there?
Um, Insu, do you have more information on this?
Insu, please, go ahead, if you have anything to offer on this question, or Councilmember's last question.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for having me be part of the discussion tonight on this ordinance. And to answer the questions, two questions, I think Jacinta did a great job in summarizing where the other cities stand. So as of today, there are ten jurisdictions total, including the county, that has, that have adopted the ordinance. And we do have a few more cities that are currently in the midst of exploring, including San Bruno. And we have a few other cities that are in line and doing a lot of internal vetting. And it's actually really encouraging, because majority of the jurisdictions that adopted, adopted it during the midst of COVID. Which is inspiring, and it was absolutely amazing. And so that speaks to the importance of this, of this initiative. And how important it is for the entire community within San Mateo County. And I completely agree that it should be a county-wide effort. And this is exactly the reason why the county is offering, really trying to motivate our city partners to, you know, join the wagon. And adopt a model ordinance, because ideally, we want something that's standardized and uniform across the entire county. So as to not confuse our community members. And so we're really trying to strive for that, and so far, majority of the jurisdictions have shown interest. It's just a matter of the timing, COVID kind of through complicated things, as you can imagine. And so in terms of adoption, the date, so majority of the cities that have adopted are in line. With the enforcement start dates being March twenty twenty-two, so in about seven months. Half Moon Bay actually started their enforcement, they were the first jurisdiction to start, because they really wanted to bring it to the forefront. Because they have been seeing tons of plastic foodware on their beaches, and it was a very high priority for their city council members. We have a few cities that are starting to look at October twenty twenty-two enforcement. City of San Mateo has adopted that date. Jacinta and city staff here are recommending that date as well. And whatever date the cities, city jurisdictions choose, the county will be in support. And we will be in close collaboration with city staff to make sure that the rollout of the education, as well as enforcement, is aligned. And in terms of the second question, private schools versus public schools. So the reason we exempted public schools in the ordinance is because. Local governments, from what I understand, we don't have authority to tell public school districts what they can and cannot do. That only resides, that authority, only the state has that authority. So based on a lot of diving and researching and talking to our county lawyers. They said we can mandate that the public schools follow and comply with the ordinance, but we cannot for the public schools.
And it was private, yes, public, no, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember? Yeah, I just wanted to remind folks too, is that, you know, the plastic bag, as far as not using plastic bags, is something that the county initiated. And went to the communities to kind of keep the same, same verbiage, so that it was universal and better accepted. And we were all on the same page, and I think that has worked out effectively. And, and I do like the October date, as I do remember back from the oh-eight, was one of the things, this was a new topic. And so some of the restaurants were saying, hey, can you give us a little more time, A, to use our product? Two, to find the right thing, because back then, it wasn't what we have today, as far as the opportunities not to use styrofoam. And what we're replacing it with, that would hold, so you could take that hot meal out. So that afforded our business folks that opportunity to use our product, as well as find what, what best fits for them. So I, I, I find that that's trying to adopt the county language is probably best, and I like the October date myself. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for presenting tonight, and hopeful and wishing you luck in getting all the other cities in alignment. I think that's really exciting, what you're working on, so thank you.
Okay, Mark, I feel like you've been left down here, is, is any, any questions for Mark? On, on the other item too, that was, was presented in addition to this, and why we have everybody here, any additional questions? I've not seen any members of the public at this time raising their hands. Not seen any other hands up, then anything else you want to finish with, city attorney?
Only to thank Jacinta and Insu Lim from the county. For making that presentation and answering those questions on the disposable foodware service ordinance. And if the city council would like to make a motion to waive first reading, and then a separate motion to introduce the ordinance. We'll come back at the next meeting on the consent calendar for adoption.
Couldn't have said it better, as city attorneys asked, is there any action on this item? First action would be to waive the first reading.
Uh, do the chair all move that we waive the first reading?
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, okay, so, okay, motion made and seconded to go ahead and waive the first reading, all those in favor say aye.
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 I have a five-oh vote in order to waive the first reading, if I'm incorrect, please speak now. Thank you, and then if we could have action on introduction of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, a motion made and seconded, may we please have a roll call city clerk.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, so five-oh on that as well. And now, thank you to everyone for their presentations, we'll move on to the next item, item B, please.
Item six B, waive second reading and adopt ordinance enacting one point eight seven percent rate increase for ecology, San Bruno garbage and recycling service. To be effective October first, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you very much, and at this time, are we turning this over to Director Ritchie?
This would be for Director Sun.
Okay, Director, Director Sun, if, if you would, please, the floor is yours.
Good evening, honor of the mayor and a member of the council, let me bring out the presentation first. Can you share, see my screen? Right, so this is to adjust the garbage rate effective October first, two thousand twenty-one. We actually talked about most of the content last week, so this is just going to be refresh, refresh course. And I'll run through the PowerPoint slides pretty fast, and it's getting late, so it won't take very long. The objective is the same as last week, we, we want to provide an overview of the ecology rate application for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And describe the review process, process. And the purpose is to waive the second reading and adopt the new ordinance enacting a one point eight seven percent rate increase for ecology. Effective October first, two thousand twenty-one. And the agenda basically will, will go over some background of the franchise agreement. What happened in the rate adjustment and some historical rate comparison. And then give you a timeline and process we have done in accordance with Proposition Two Eighteen. And, and then we will request a waiver of the second reading and the, and ordinance adoption. And it goes to some detail, the franchise agreement, as we have talked about it before, the franchise agreement. And between the city, San Bruno and the ecology, started from July one, two thousand ninety, nineteen ninety-eight. And it will expire in, on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, this is for solid waste collection service. It covers billing record, record keeping, billing fee, et cetera. And the current year rate adjustment is based on interim rate year adjustment. Basically, the rate adjustment is purely rely on CPI adjustments. For the next fiscal year, the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we will do a detailed rate year adjustment. Which will be reviewed by independent consultant. This effective garbage service rate request increases one point eight seven percent. New rate should be taking effect in the current fiscal year, but the, the effective date has been postponed by three months. So the effective date is actually October first. And the factor, as we talked about, was purely based on CPI calculation. And here is the last, about twelve, twelve to thirteen years of rate adjustment. The darker line are, are the detailed year rate adjustment, and the gray line is the interim year and rate adjustment. The average interim, interim rate year adjustment is about two point two three percent. And for the upcoming, and for this fiscal year, we only have one point eight seven percent, which is lower than the average. And here I just give you a sample of residential or commercial rate comparison between what the current, what the customers are paying now. And then what the rate is going to be effective October first. And for the most commonly used residential total at thirty-two gallons, the increase is only about sixty cents per month. Associate, and ecology agreed to postpone the rate at the beginning from two, from July one to September, to September one. The city had to revise it to October first, because of some legal compliance issues with the ordinance adoption. And then, and the effective timeframe. In, together with the postponed rate increase, ecology also proposed a pilot program, which was launched on July first, two thousand twenty-one. What I like to point out to you is, last week, I may have given you some incorrect information. And thanks to the city manager, he pointed it out, so I want to recap the pilot, the, the pilot program on the abandoned waste collection. So this program started on July first, two thousand twenty-one. It, we, in this program, we college will be collect and dispose of specified abandoned waste during the regular, regular business hours. Well, the waste can be reported through the San, city, the San Bruno response, this is reporting application. And then also can be as observed, only in the public right of the way, allow recollection daily trash collection routes throughout the city. And, or, and as observed during regular patrol of the hotspot, as which abandoned items are regularly or frequently deposited. The, this, this, the pilot program of this abandoned waste program will actually last about six months. And after that, recall we determine whether additional staff will be, will be, will be added to the program if necessary. And we sent out a public notice on June the twenty-ninth. And providing the explanation on a hearing, public hearing schedule, protest period. Approval process, rate adjustment, and proposed increase for, for the, for different container types. As of August eighteenth, we have received, we only received twenty written protests from residents. And the, the requirement for two eighteen is a minimum of fifty percent of the residents. In order for this rate increase to be, can, for the, for the city, for the council to reject the thing in the rate increase. So we are well below the mandatory fifty percent requirement. This is a timeline, we are pretty familiar with by this timeline by now. The council director staff provide forty-five day notice on June twenty-second, we mailed it June twenty-ninth. Last week, we had the first reading, this, right now is the second reading, we asked the council to adopt. If the council adopts the ordinance, the rate will become effective on, on October first. So as staff, we recommend the council waive the second rating and adopt the ordinance enacting one point eight seven rate, seven, one point eight seven percent rate increase. For ecology to be effective October first. And I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any, thank you.
Thank you, Director, for your report. Members of the public, if you wish to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand at this time. Members of the public, if you wish to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand at this time. And if I could turn to my colleagues, if there are any questions on the presentation. Not seen any hands from the community at this time. Is there any action by council?
You have a comment?
Oh, you, oh, there, Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. So I appreciate Recology's review of council's request to cancel rate increases this year, even though the request was not granted. Although thankful for the postponement, I can't support an increase this COVID nineteen year where the pandemic has impacted so many, and the true results from those struggling are yet to be seen. Aside from the belief that the timing of this increase as the Delta variant is increasing is not right for our community, I'm also disappointed that Recology has not yet prioritized adhering to its contract term dedicated to an annual fundraiser for our local schools. At last year's hearing on May twelfth, two thousand twenty, I posed a number of questions regarding contract adherence that both had to do with city community benefits and the school districts' benefits and have since discussed this with staff. A number of the questions raised revolved around Recology's twenty four year contract with San Bruno and the benefits of the community that result from the contract outside of the standard franchise fee. Since that hearing, Recology has provided some wonderful enhancements that have produced great results, including the fall and spring cleanup envisioned by past council member Davis and the abandoned waste program envisioned by city staff in Recology. As a council member, I want to thank you for working with staff and other members of the council to initiate these ideas and follow through with the community benefits portion that benefit our city. However, one of the greatest needs in our community are our schools. This was first raised as an issue over a year ago and has been brought up since then, and I have checked on its progress throughout the past year. Schools were open all last year in San Bruno, and even with remote working, the district office and school offices were open for drop ins. We need to ensure that all terms, especially those that are meant to benefit our community, especially our local schools that are suffering so much right now financially, are being adhered to, especially once they have been brought to our attention, and there has been sufficient time to address the lack of adherence over the past twenty three years. Thank you, and I will not be supporting this this increase tonight.
Any other comments or questions from colleagues? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah. Can staff or if Recology's here discuss a little bit about what the amount of money typically is involved for the fundraising? What amount are we we talking about and and just just to hear a response from Recology on Councilwoman Mason's comments, it would be helpful to understand what the other side of the story is.
Let me just check with city manager is, I just saw your mic go on, so that's why I was suggesting you and or whom you might feel to answer that.
Sure. To the mayor, Vice Mayor Medina, my recommendation would be we not get into the specifics of the of the contract tonight. We will be going into discussions with the city council about the future of the city's garbage franchise. I will be sending the city council with the schedule of that. It is a very long process, and we do need to begin in early twenty twenty two. With regard to the recycling coordinator and the work that is done with regard to to that position, that is a component of the contract that is I know that there are questions. The city and Recology have been talking about that. And I just think that that's more appropriately to talk about at a later time when we're talking about the contract and all the sections. The tonight's agendized item is a rate increase based on the contract provision for interim years, where there is a increase based on the CPI. We do have Kirsten Pinoki from Recology here. Should she like to provide any additional feedback, I just wanted to note that she is in the room.
I have a question for our city attorney then, while we're
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. I didn't get the mute off. Sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so for our city attorney, I know we go through that, we've gone through this a few times about the contract language and and at this point, we are here to do our part in complying with the contract language. That for the city council to not, what are the consequences for the city not granting this increase?
Oh, right, as we've discussed before, the contract does require that we have annual rate adjustments, and it allows the city to bet the amount of those adjustments, which the city has done in this year and in in all prior years, as far as I know, to make sure that the, that Recology is asking only for the rate adjustment that they are allowed to receive under the contract. The questions, I think, as the city manager indicated about other non-financial contract provisions is something that appears will be addressed separately.
And and it's, and it's your recommendation that we that we comply with our contract?
I, I, I always recommend that all parties comply with contracts.
Right, and 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 the the likely consequence would be that if the city doesn't approve this this rate increase, that Recology would still be able to obtain that increase, just the city would pay for it.
Well, so, right, not to speculate about Recology, what they might or might not do. I think that there would certainly be some risk in the city not not approving the agreement and would would perhaps call the city in a default of the of the contract under some circumstances anyway.
Understood. So just for the public, I, I, I'm, I'm clear what I'm going to do here. But for the public to understand if there's anything outside of this, these terms that we're voting on, if there's something that isn't proper allegedly on a contract that could be resolved at what, at what time?
So normally, the non-financial terms of the contract have various provisions about notice and opportunity to cure and so on, so that those non-financial provisions can't always be used as a, as a lever to extract other financial concessions from that part of the contract. And so, you know, there are various provisions in the in the agreement. I know that Councilmember Mason is is asked for a review, and that's an operational staff issue that I'm not addressing. I'm only indicating that in general, the the financial provisions and the requirement for the city to approve those those increases, so long as they are complied with the contract are in the contract, and I recommend that the the city council does approve them under these circumstances.
Thank you for that clarification. So I will be supporting this. However, I really want to hear sooner than later what progress is being made on the additional items that Councilman Mason is is bringing up. So those are my comments for now. Mr. Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to let Vice Mayor Medina know that in looking into when the last fundraiser was for schools, nobody could actually remember. So, you know, I think that says a lot.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just go ahead and understood, and and we need to get to the bottom of it, and things happen with long contracts and I do want to thank you for bringing it up. I still believe that I am required, I could vote no, yes, but I, but but based on the information provided before me, I, I, I'm, I will be voting yes, and but we still need to look into the items that you're bringing up and make sure everything's made whole. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? If if not, I would just, Vice Mayor, thank you for asking the questions that you did. We honor a contract. Councilmember Mason, you've asked a question, and I know this is not a fundraiser, but I I certainly appreciate the codes for kids or the compost and those other elements or this trial period that Recology is doing. But yes, if there's something in the contract that needs to be solidified, I think that should be, and there should be some kind of a response. But I will be supporting this at this time. Seeing no other hands from the community or from my colleagues, the, there is an action, and if to proceed forward, it would be to waive the second reading. Is there any action?
Motion to waive the second reading?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any noes? So, I'm, so no. So we have a four one on not waiving the second reading, since we have a clear majority of the second reading does not have to be read in its entirety. So we can move on to the, any action on the adoption of the ordinance?
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
No.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to one.
Thank you for your presentations and reports this evening. Now we'll move on to item seven, comment from council members. Councilmembers, if you have comments for this evening, if you would raise your virtual or even physical hand is fine, but Councilmember Hamilton?
So I want to remind the community that there's a great opportunity for folks who want to serve the San Bruno community. The San Bruno Community Foundation has openings coming up on its board, and applications are being accepted now for the San Bruno Community Community Foundation Board. There's a brochure with all the details available on our city's website at sanbruno.ca.gov forward slash SBCF Board. The applications are due by five P M on September seventeenth. And this is a great opportunity to get involved and have a voice in your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. The first is hopefully we can get a response to one of the public commenters earlier around the city and it's, I guess, response to COVID, including requirements for staff. We're hearing a lot in the news. It's actually all over the news now that the FDA has approved Pfizer. It would be good to have a, an update on whether we're requiring regular testing. Are we, will there be a requirement for vaccinations? Just some kind of a report to the council on what the city is, what the city's plan is. I also wanted to note, just want to say thank you. The new city net bill looks great. I'm not sure who worked on it, but great design, very clear. So whoever, whoever's behind it, great job. I also wanted to thank, I believe it's Sandeep. I know it was a pet peeve of mine that I had to go to on demand and click on these two different kids in kids junior sections, and somehow it's been fixed, and I'm sure somehow it's Sandeep and the team over there, so very much appreciated. Thank you. I also wanted to highlight something. Since Superintendent Espinoza was on earlier, if anybody has friends, family that are interested in working for the school district, we know, as he mentioned, you know, we are a lower paid district, but we have a lot of openings here in San Bruno, and it's not just the San Bruno Park School District, but the city will be having openings as well, and hopefully you get the word out that we're looking for people to commit to the city. And I think it's, it's a really exciting time to be either in the district or with the city, so please spread the word. And then lastly, I don't know if there needs to be mutual council comment, I mean, mutual council consent or need to agendize this, and I can talk to Attorney Zaffrono maybe tomorrow or after this, but exactly when, when, when does the city attorney believe that it is the city's right to ensure that its contractors are adhering to its contracts? I think that just as important as it is for us to adhere to our contracts, it's also just as important that we ensure our contractors adhere to the provisions in their contracts. And so I'd like to find out whether that's a memo that can be written to us or that needs to be a closed session. I'm not quite sure, but I think it's important that the contract goes both ways. Thank you.
Thank you, and just Superintendent Espinoza is still on the line with us, so thank you for staying. And Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know, this coming Thursday, second harvest grocery distribution will be at Bel Air Elementary at four fifty third Avenue. It will, people start lining up a little bit before two. It goes on from two to four. This will be the last month where it will be on the Thursday. It is now moving to Wednesdays. But we will be there to to help our community. And if you or anybody needs any help with food, I mean, you could they take signups right there on the spot, and and nobody gets denied. So if you need food, come and get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands up, I also wanted to make note of the city net bill as well. I noticed that and had to do a double take because I go, okay, this is different. So, but I like it. I think it was clear, concise, and and easy. So I want to acknowledge that as well. In regards to the email that was brought up by a prior speaker, we'd already received an email from our city manager that has had the letter, is working on a response to us on that. Other than that, if, just to let you know that obviously this Friday is again, the groundbreaking at five thirty, San Bruno City Park at the pavilion, as well as the final band at six o'clock. So wish everyone the very best between now and then, and hope to see you on Friday. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held September fourteenth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. Thank you very much. Take care and good night.